I pray, Lord, that you would be in this meeting, Lord. I pray, Lord, that everything that goes on today for the city of Inkster that we all love, I pray that everything will be done decent and in order. We love you so much. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Roll call, please.
Mayor Wimberly.
Here.
Councilwoman Wiley.
Present.
Councilwoman Washington.
Present.
Councilman Shaw. Councilwoman Howard.
Here.
Councilman Williams.
Here.
Councilman Chisholm.
Here.
We have seven present tonight, Mayor. We do have a quorum.
All right. Move right into the agenda, approval of the agenda.
Um, no, no, no. We need to add two items.
All right.
We need to add the two, uh, items A and B in closed session.
So. Where do you want to?
Under new, under new business. Sorry about that.
All right.
So, uh.
Where we put those?
Yep. Items, uh, A and.
And B. Closed session. And you'll do those?
Yes.
All right. Do we have a motion? Go here a second. For it's been moved and supported. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nays? Ayes have it. Motion carries. Presentations and discussions. We do have a couple of presentations. Um, the first one, Senator Betty Jean Alexander's office. We have the distinguished councilwoman from Huron Heights. I know you put no two hat, you got two hats going on today, right?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Council and Clerk and distinguished guests this evening. Um, would you join me, please? Ms. Najah Barry. Oh, Bazi, I just say Barry, didn't I? I'm so sorry. Bazi, I'm going to read this this evening. This is state tribute, special tribute from the state of Michigan. Let it be known that Ms. Najah Bazi has dedicated her life to be a light in others' lives. Ms. Najah Bazi has done nothing short of providing miracles for people across Michigan. Ms. Bazi's aim is to help communities in need while focusing on extreme poverty. Najah Bazi has such a passion for the community that she decided to become the founder of her own nonprofit organization, Inkster's Zaman. Did I get that correct? Zaman? Zaman, I'm sorry, international. This nonprofit has been able to reach over 250,000 people in need. Ms. Bazi's organization has put 94 cents of every dollar towards programming. Madame Najah Bazi's nonprofit has distributed over a million pounds of food to families in need throughout southeast Michigan. Has provided 7,943 hours of literacy and skills training to single mothers and immigrant women in southeast Michigan through your boost, which stands for building ongoing opportunities through skills training since 2011. Each year, your organization, along with your guidance and expertise in leadership, organizes the annual, okay, I'm gonna, Zaman? The man? I'm gonna work on that. Run, walk. In its 10th year, is that correct? Okay. Raised $23,000 for women and children living in extreme poverty. All her hard work and dedication has not gone unnoticed. In special tribute, therefore, this document is signed and dedicated to Najah Bazi for her community values and dedication to making the world a better place. This document is signed by State Representative Jewel Jones, State Senator Betty Jean Alexander, Lieutenant Governor for the state of Michigan Garland Gilchrist II, and our Governor for the state of Michigan Gretchen Whitmer. Congratulations.
Let me, let, let me just add, though, because I didn't hear, that Najah was also one of our CNN heroes for 2019. And that's an international honor, right? But one of my favorite parts is that she's right next door to us. So if you haven't visited, uh, the centers of mine international, it's right next door. And my favorite part is lunch on Wednesdays.
Lunch, right?
So, we're gonna be for lunch this Wednesday, Najah. Okay? At 12 o'clock. So you guys all join me and we're gonna join Najah. We're gonna have some good food, all right? Would you like words, Najah?
I don't, I don't wanna have my back to anyone, so not quite sure how to do this. But on behalf of the Board of Directors of Seminole International and on behalf of all of the women and children that we take care of, I think that, um, given our current climate right now, what we really need is prayer and love. And, um, loving our neighbor never hurts anyone. And that is exactly what we believe in. So we are hope for humanity and we invite you all to come see us next door. And being an Inkster has been one of the greatest blessings for our organization and for all of us. And so we're so thankful to be here the past five years and hope to be here for years on end to come. Thank you, everybody, for this terrific, terrific honor. May God bless and protect everybody and happy 2020 and a peaceful one. Thank you so much.
Also in our audience with us today, the Honorable General, the gentleman from E Course, Councilman Sharah. All right. We do have another presentation. This is one of my favorite ones also. Fire Department? Oh, no, yeah. Good evening. That's a hard act to follow, but, uh, I'm gonna do my best. What I wanna talk about tonight is something that's been, um, I'm like, I don't know where to turn. Been very dear to my heart for, since I've been here. And it is to try to get a program in place that will allow our local residents an opportunity to be a firefighter. It's an expensive venture to try to get the credit, the credentials that you need to do it. And, uh, a lot of people just can't afford to pay for the academy and the EMT and the paramedic programs. It costs about $15,000 to do it. So what we've been fortunate enough to do is to form a partnership with, uh, one of the local business owners. And he was kind enough to sponsor, uh, one of our local young gentlemen through this program. And upon completion, he'll have a job as a firefighter in the city of Inkster. And the key thing about this is that he's local. So he's one of yours and one of ours, okay? So what I wanna do is start by saying thank you to the gentleman who made this possible. His name is Abe.
Hetcham.
Hetcham? I don't see Abe in here, so we were gonna present him with a plaque, um, but I guess I have to take it by his office. But I do wanna say a very special thank you to him because he made this possible. Okay? And now, I would like to introduce you to that young man I was just talking about, who will be our first recipient of the Inkster Fire Department Scholarship Program. His name is Teray Smith. Can you come up? This says here, "This certificate is presented to Teray Smith for being selected to the 2019 Inkster Fire Department Scholarship Program. Your strong work ethic, motivation, and dedication to the fire service is commendable." That's what I'm talking about, starting off 2020. Wonderful. All right, let's keep it moving then. Let's see here. Consent agenda. Consent agenda? There's a motion? Move support it?
Support it.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Ayes have it. Motion carries. Words and commissions. Let's get the first one out the way. I apologize. Hold on, let's do, City Clerk, if you'd like to do that one first.
Um, Mayor Wimberly, there needs to be a nomination for the condemnation board and, um, an appointment for, I'll do them separately, for, um, Deborah Owens, whose term has expired. And we have her information on file.
So you need your support?
No, I need somebody to make the motion in.
Okay, make the motion.
You need a nomination, right?
You're, um, actually, we have her information on file, so you're actually just reappointing the person.
Okay. Deborah Owens?
Yes.
It's been moved. Any support?
Support.
Moved and supported. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Motion carries.
The next person on the condemnation, um, board, whose information we have as well is Charles Rizio. And he needs to be reappointed. His term has expired.
Madam Clerk, will he still be an alternate?
No, he will not be an alternate. He will actually be appointed.
Okay.
They moved and supported. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Motion carries.
And the next person, Mayor Wimberly, is Tom Michelini, who has been serving as the alternate, but would, would like to be appointed. And we do have his information on file as well.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Ayes have it. Motion carries. Yes.
Um, and for the, um, Commission on Aging, we have two reappointments, Iris Long and June Patterson. So the first, we do have their information on file. The first person is Iris Long.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Any, none? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Ayes have it. Motion carries.
The next person is June Patterson.
So move.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Ayes have it. Motion carries. Moving right along. Are we, are you, you done, ma'am?
Yes.
All right. Yes, ma'am. Councilwoman Wiley.
Yes. The chair, the one thing that I inquired about the information for the person that was appointed to the compensation committee.
Yes, ma'am.
I understand the vote still passed and everything, but could we get that paperwork?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, we have, yes.
Yes, ma'am. We do have it?
Yes, he did come in.
Okay. So we just need to forward that to each of the council members?
Yes.
And that way we make sure that we, we have it, okay? All right, thank you. Please. Sir, I'm sorry. Councilwoman, were you done?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Speak up into the mic for me, please, sir. The mics are working really good today. You guys, can you hear me?
Right, they are.
You can't hear me today? I haven't heard one person say, "Speak up." Okay, good. Thanks, Troy.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to reappoint, uh, Ava's Love back to the beautification committee.
Ava's Love has been moved and supported. Any discussion? I do have a question, not necessarily on the appointment. So should I wait for after the appointment to ask the question as it relates to that? Okay. So as, as it relates to the vacancies, from my understanding, uh, Councilman, I'm speaking to Ms. Tony, it's only seven appointments, not all of the vacancies that we see here? Go up to seven?
But up to seven, but I think what she's saying, but she, she need everybody to own the page, but she's trying to get at least seven people in the, uh, beautification.
Okay. This is just six, 16 vacancies right now, but what you're saying is that we, we wanna have seven appointed. Right? Okay. So right now, we, we have one, two, three, four, five. Okay. All right. Well, actually, look, no, no, four because of you. You're gonna, you're gonna stick on, you're gonna stick on that board? Okay. All right. Tony's here?
Yeah.
Good. Chairwoman, you wanna step forward for me? Thank you. That way we'll be all on the same page, 'cause I see you have all these vacancies here. We're just trying to really tighten up for 2020. So I'll get you the support that you need. So can you speak to that, please?
Yes, um, to be on the, um, the committee, all we need is seven to do all the different things. As for the other ones, just volunteers, 'cause I do have some that are just volunteers. Uh, one person was on the board, but 'cause they can't make meetings 'cause of their jobs and, you know, other things that they're doing, then they're just volunteer, you know, until they're able to get back on the board. So just seven to be on the board, you know, to make all the decisions and stuff of what we do. And we just ask for different volunteers when we doing the community-wide cleanup.
Okay. Can you touch on, I know you do that, is it, can you touch on, expand on everything else that you do within this committee?
Other things that we do, uh, for the beautification, um, we drive around the city to see what's, you know, what's going on, if there's any dumping that's going around, what litters need to be picked up. We want them, um, our main thoroughfare to be cleaned up, like Inkster Road, Middle Belt. We do have different ones that adopt different areas. So I do have like a form, an application for different groups or individuals that wanna adopt a certain area and they will maintain that. So we have that. We also have the, uh, beautification awards where we, you know, those who keep their, um, yards landscape, you know, beautiful. We do that, um, every year. So when, when it comes to the community-wide cleanup, we have it from April, the kickoff, to September.
Do you have a date as of yet for April?
Um, the last Saturday in April.
And we're looking for 1,000 volunteers. I'm very ambitious.
As many that can come out.
So we're looking, I'm looking at 1,000 volunteers to help us throughout the community-wide cleanup. And know that, that I'm gonna count to 500 myself, so I'm looking forward to the community coming out and supporting that.
Okay.
You know, of course, this is our community, so it starts at home. So.
Yes.
We love when other people come and support us. We have to do the work ourselves. And I think it makes sense in what you're doing. So we wanna help as much as we possibly can. And we have one of our council members that's on the committee already with you. So it's looked like you need three more appointments, right? Am I saying that correctly?
Gabe is on, Gabe is on there.
Yep. So you got Gabe. There's one, two.
Ava's being, um, reappointed.
Three, four.
And one was just nominated the last council meeting, um.
Who was that? Was that Lenora?
That's her name, yeah, her. Um.
So we got two. So you need two more then.
Two more.
Okay.
And Kathleen, I gotta check with her to see if she wanna be reappointed.
Okay.
'Cause her term had expired.
All right, perfect. Okay. Good. Did you guys have any questions? The chairwoman, what she said? Okay. Thank you, so.
Just one simple.
Councilwoman?
If we have a major cleanup, because they ride around and they find different locations. If we have a major cleanup, we, uh, come in, the Inkster Cleanup Coalition, which is about. Organists, fire, um, police, DPW, and so we can take any major incident and, uh, have the people to do it. We always want everybody to come out. But the Inkster Cleanup Coalition is part of the beautification committee. We may have things of that nature.
That's awesome. And also too, our Chief Judge, Judge Johnson, has, um, she just hired a young man to be over the, um, community.
The alternate program, 'cause, yeah, they be out as well.
So they're coming, yeah, so we've really been having them working. Jerome over in DPS along with Daryl, they've been really having them working over the holiday season. So they've been out in the community. So we definitely wanna make sure they're part of that coalition as well.
And I also have, uh, Councilwoman Wiley, she's our city council liaison, so.
Good. Wonderful. All right. And perfect. So here, any more discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Ayes have it. Motion carries. I know we have a few more. Please, Councilman? Speak into the mic, please, sir.
Wanted to be reappointed. I know Mr. Miller is here. For the board review.
Aye. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Any, none? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Ayes have it. Motion carries. Thanks, Will, for your service. Everyone for their service. Let's see here. Councilwoman Howard, you have anything for me?
No, not at this time. I wanted to ask you.
Please.
Is she, um, appointed invited for the downtown developer board? She was, she was ten.
Uh, right. So it's actually someone from this board, correct? As an ex-official? Am I saying that correctly? City Clerk, chime in, please.
Yes, sir. I didn't, I, I don't, I don't know. Have we sent her notice yet?
Charlie, speak into the mic for me. Speak into the mic, please, thank you. So what do we need to do? I'm helping, Chief.
Have to be talked about, uh, with regarding the matter.
Okay. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
So it's some, so let me make sure to understand. You said there's some additional questions that have to be answered by the who? In regards to what?
Tenure in our city charter. So that's what it was labeled as as far as, um, Councilwoman Mitchell's term. So there is no way to mention that in terms of why she's no longer on the, there's no mention of tenure in the charter.
Interesting. Okay. Has it always been like that?
It has always been like that. Um, and there, the information that he sent was, I mean, it's kinda outdated to a certain extent from what the current language reads. So it's just a discussion, I think, that needs to be had with him in regards to.
Okay. So have we sent him something? Our city attorney something? Okay. All right, so we just waiting on the response back from you? All right, perfect. All right, then, so moving right along. Does that answer your question so far?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
All right, good then. Councilwoman Wiley, did you have anything? I know that you started with you, but you going in line. I know that you wanted to be, be reappointed to the cable commission?
Yes.
Yeah, perfect. Can I get a motion to have Councilwoman Wiley reappointed to the cable commission, please? Move support it? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Our motion carries. Councilman Chisholm? All right, thank you, sir. Just wanna watch that. All right, moving right along. New business.
Item A under new business is gonna be the motion, um, I'm sorry, the vote that was taken at the ordinance with the vote in closed session, Griffith.
What's your pleasure? Go move. Move to support it? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Ayes have it. Motion carries. Councilman Williams.
Um, and item B is the vote that was taken in closed session, um, Suite B.
What's your pleasure? It's been moved and supported. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Ayes have it. Motion carries. Anything else under new business? All right, public participation. Pretty good. Here we go. Michael Jackson. Three minutes, please, sir. How you doing, Mr. Jackson? Good. Happy New Year to you. Please, speak right into the mic there, sir.
I wanna address something to y'all regarding the ordinance officer, a wall. Um, I've been in, I've, I've lived in Inkster for three years and, um, I need, we need a roof on our house, so we got site, we got sided for it. I have, like many houses have, I have a tarp on it. So I got sided twice. So I went to court and she said, "It's a thousand dollars. Pay 500 and, you know, it's, it's, it's over with." And so I said, "I'll, I'll, I'll rather try this in trial." So she's out of the picture at that point. I go over to the city attorney, the assistant city attorney, I talked to him, and he has a paper whether I want a trial, a judge trial, or jury trial. And I said, "I'm not sure." So I went downstairs to my car to call my attorney. Time I got back up there, the judge called me in the office. Somebody had wrote on the paper that I wanted to judge trial. Circumvented, circumvented the system. So I, I told the judge, "No, I didn't, I hadn't made up my mind yet." So she postponed it to the 14th of this month. In between that time, I received a card threatening and taking my license. I, I received a card threatened, that was threatening to take my license, a warrant for my arrest, and, and you didn't get this notice if you don't answer this notice in 14 days. So wait a minute, I got a paper from Judge Johnson, says I go back on the 14th. So what I'm, what I'm, what I'm addressing today is, uh, her conduct is questionable. It's unprofessional. Just wanna bring it to y'all's attention. And I tried to talk to you about it, uh, Mr. Mayor, but you didn't have time. Thank you.
Okay. Glad you put it on record. Moving right along. Barbara Cooper?
Mayor, Council, the citizens of Inkster, Happy New Year to everybody. I am here, uh, on behalf of Crime Stoppers, uh, dealing with my cousin Anthony, Nick Jones. Uh, we do have flyers, uh, out and, uh, we'll be posting them all around. But on this Thursday at 12:30 PM at the Pentecostal Temple, the Fellowship Hall, we will be having a press conference with Crime Stoppers. And we are inviting the entire community, uh, to come out and support us, uh, for this endeavor. There is a $2,500 reward for anyone who has any information, uh, on the death of Nick. And, uh, we will be doing T-shirts at a later date to raise funds to make the rewards go up even higher. But, uh, I would appreciate everyone who could come out and support us. I do have flyers for everybody up here, um, for you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thursday.
Thank you.
Thank you. Lucy Byrd? And just hand them to the clerk, please. Hand them to the clerk, please. Thank you.
Thank you. You can just hand, yeah. Actually, um, I can scan this to them and send it to them tomorrow. If that's okay, so you don't have to waste the flyer.
You can just hand, yeah. Actually, um I can scan this to them and send it to them tomorrow. If that's okay, so you don't have to waste the flyer.
Hi, Ms. Byrd.
Yes, hello, everyone.
Hi.
A mayor and uh Inkster council. My name is Lucy Byrd. And I am the director of the Adventist Community Service uh outreach health program for the Sharon Southern Adventist Church. Our church is located at two eight five three seven Cherry Street, Inkster. And it's just across from Womack Temple. And our pastor is Pastor Cadet. Um on February the sixteen, uh twenty-twenty, from three PM to six PM, we're gonna be having a community uh movie that we act, where we inviting the community to come in and view it with us. The movie is entitled simply Raw Reversing Diabetes in Thirty Days. Uh we, we are inviting families to come and join us and view this music and this movie, sorry, that will provide valuable information and guidance. Research states that average uh every uh that, that uh every third child will eventually uh get diabetes. And, and diabetes carries a lot of complication. And I believe that if we educate our kids while they're small as to uh their nutritional values, uh what uh the negative and the positive effect of their nutrition that uh maybe they can avoid a lot of these problems. And also after we doing that in our sanctuary, and after that, we're gonna have a let's get healthy cooking class. We're gonna have a vegan cooking class and uh individuals that go to church, they don't have to worry about a meal. They can come to us and we will give them a vegan meal. And if we have leftover food, we will simply um, and if you have, if they have seniors in their family, we will do a carryout for them. So in order to participate in the program, you have to pre-register. You can pre- uh pre-register by February the tenth, twenty-twenty uh by calling um Lucy Byrd at three one three two nine three ninety-seven fifty-three, or Jean Bannon at two, two, uh two four zero three eighty seven two two one. And this is the third year that we have been doing um community health program. Thank you. And I appreciate the opportunity that you've given up me to uh talk about our program.
Thank you. Good, please, yeah, for sure. You can leave them right over on the desk over there, on the table over there. Yes, ma'am. And make sure that we get one so we can also share that information with the council. Thank you. Ms. Moore? Yvonne Moore?
Happy New Year, Mayor, Council.
Happy New Year.
Of the citizens of Inkster. First of all, I'd like to tell everyone, thank you so much for everyone who participated and donated to the Inkster Housing Resident Council Holiday Celebration. The kids had a ball and we wouldn't have been able to do it without the help and support of, of the mayor, the council, and our citizens in Inkster. So one, I would like to turn around and give all of you a big round of applause. Two, also, and I'm glad that they're sitting here for Inkster citizens who care. They gave our coats for our kids and I didn't get a chance to thank them at the last council meeting. So I really want to thank them so much because they were able to keep a lot of our children warm. So thank you. Next. I'm coming on a really solemn note. I know that everyone heard of the young man who was murdered Thursday night, January second, on New York and Princess. Um he was only twenty-three years old. He had, was engaged to be married. He had a daughter that will be three this week, and his fiance was also expecting. How I know all this information is because that was my granddaughter. My granddaughter's fiance. He happened to be in the wrong place in the wrong time. I know a lot of people were speculating, but I can say diligently, through the cooperation of the police, we found out that there was circumstances. He was in the wrong place at the wrong time. Excuse me. His mom didn't, doesn't have any type of insurance. So they have set up a GoFundMe account under GoFundMe dot com. Support Delano. I'm just speaking out to let you guys know, this violence must stop. Our young, our young boys are getting killed. Our young men are dying for useless nothing for no reason at all. We have to unite. We're gonna have to get together and educate and support because these senseless deaths, they make no sense at all. I mean, she's asking why and nobody can give her that answer. It's hard to comfort somebody when you don't know why, but I can truthfully. I'm sorry. I did not mean to break down. I swear I was not gonna break down. But I can say that the police have diligently been working on this homicide. And I appreciate that so much because I told the, his people, please do not retaliate. Please, let God handle it. Because whether they believe it or not, he says vengeance is his and he will handle it. So I'm just asking, if you can, go on the GoFundMe dot com, support her cause she doesn't know what's going on. We're doing as much as we can from our, our side of the family with my granddaughter. But she's broken up, as I say, expecting and has a daughter. So I'm just asking. And I appreciate your time. Thank you so much. It's Go, it's um Dar, Darica Walker. D A R I C A Walker. GoFundMe dot com. Support Delano. That's his mom. Thank you.
G A B C or is that Gabe? There you go, Gabe. There you go. You, you, you got one of those names. It's just, you don't even, I'm like, is this an organization or just say Gabe? I like that. Mr. Henderson, how you doing? Happy New Year.
Happy New Year, family. I love y'all. I'm happy New Year, you know, glad to see y'all and all that. Uh a few things and I, I'm gonna try to get it, you know, for y'all. Pull, pull the hook.
You got, you got three minutes.
Okay, I see a classmate of mine, I know, it just dawned on me, years ago, I spoke on something I think be beneficial to the community and all that. You know, I talked about chicken coops, you know, being able to raise chickens in the city of Inkster. I know some other upscale communities, they do allow that. Free range, good meeting and all that, you know what I'm saying? Something we can do. Well, anyway, okay, that's one thing. Okay, our historic, we have a historical commission. Uh we're trying to get information, documents, and different things about our, our great city of Inkster. I personally, myself, I would like to go down in the deep uh tunnels of the old city hall and see if I could retrieve some things that we probably could use the old library and see, you know, if we can find some information. And uh I hope y'all allow me. I'm gonna get my respirator and all that and my CSI and all that gear and all that. So if you allow me to go down there, I'll be, cause we are, we are searching, we're searching, what's that song? Searching? Okay, well, anyway. Okay. And another thing, you know, talking about the problems in our city, I know uh you've having a, a, a serious challenge. You know, some of our schools, you know, going and all that. And um sometimes they don't have the proper guidance. You know, we have a mentoring program going at the rec complex, okay? Tuesday, four thirty. We in need of people to help us along in that mentor program. In the process of, we know we can try to teach, you know, help them along in the math and the science and different things and their reading. But also, we can view in sometime the personal challenges that they might have at home and we might can help them along. So Tuesday, four thirty, Dozier Rec Complex. See if we can, you know, come, come and help us, help us out. We need.
Is that just Tuesday or?
Uh for right now, yes. And then they have Boy Scouts Wednesday, and then they have another uh program Monday, but Tuesday, mainly Tuesday. And uh, and that's, that's about it, Joey. That's about it. So we didn't bring the hook on.
You were doing, you were pretty close.
Beautiful, well, no, that's, that's another story. But and, and thank y'all.
You're welcome. Thank you for your spirit. Thank you for your spirit, man. Thank you for your spirit. Alright. Will Miller? Will Miller?
Hello, sir. Hello to you, Mr. Mayor, council, family and friends. My name is Will Miller. I am the current president of National Action Network here in Inkster, Western Wayne County. Wanted to go over a couple of things that we went over in our meeting. Um Saturday, we had our general membership meeting. Had to write it down. I usually don't write stuff down, but. We had um, we had to address a couple of issues. Um the quick one, a lady came in regarding a issue with um police coming into her home. Um she was all upset, but she got a chance to air grievances. Um it happened in District One. Um Reverend Williams happened to be, well, Councilman Williams in his role, happened to be in the, in the room at the time, took her complaint, followed up on it. Uh we're getting to the bottom of it. It looked, it's. She didn't quite know how things was going, but we working with that to make sure everything settles down properly. So that one was done. The other thing though, Ms. Wendy Della Dixon, um she came to council to talk about the conditions of her housing unit um last time. She came to the, to the NAM meeting to actually ask and outreach and reach out for assistance from us. Uh we said that we would go ahead and take a look at what was going on in her unit and the case. Um I went to go talk to uh Mr. Baldwin today. Um while we were having a conversation, he took me in office, we started up and he offered to go, let me go take a look at the unit. I said, that would be great. Um so we went to go take a look at it. Um I spoke to her, um Brother Wasser, and the gentleman that was doing the work at the time, he told me the extent of the work that he completed when I got there, everything. It wasn't like it was. I haven't seen the Facebook video, but every time I speak about it, they were like, the one on the Facebook video, I'm like, yeah, that one. So apparently it was pretty bad. They've done some work, but Ms. Dixon is obviously skeptical about it. She says it's been going on for a while. So we're gonna be in contact with her housing, resident council, and Inkster Housing uh commission to try and keep this from boiling over continuously like that, getting into the news, falling and stuff, it's things that we can, we can fix in-house. So we're gonna try and do that and be a part of that. So we got that going, but while I'm talking about Inkster housing, um I do want to talk about the one thing I still want to hold them to task about that I talked to them about in their meetings. I'm gonna mention it here, is the amount of vacancies that's going on over in Inkster housing. When I talk to the residents, even though they say there's issues with the conditions, the number one thing they complain about is safety over in Inkster housing. So, and I believe that the vacancies are a foundation, a large cause for, for the, for that type of problems. They complain about squatters and people doing things in there. Um some of that might be alleviated eventually. I know that they're still trying to work out an agreement between either them and the professional, uh private professional group or here in the city of Inkster. The police is trying to get more security over there, but in the meantime, we gotta try and do something with regard to that because we need to fill them up. Twenty-twenty is important when it comes to residents being in this city. So there's things that we need to do to try and push that forward. Um other than that, we're, the last thing that we're trying to do over there, um out here, we're upset about the, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Mr. President.
There's a belligerent, ridiculous attack on the women in our communities right now going on. It's been in news. It's been, people have seen it all over the place. It's happened to some friends or some cousins of mine. Um what we plan on doing is trying to start a fundraiser. We're gonna start um trying to give the first two hundred or so women that we get pepper spray to keep themselves safe out here. Uh we're gonna start trying to work on getting free defense, close-quarter defense classes for women out here to try and help them out. We're gonna try and be as belligerent as they are. We're trying to defend the women in our community as they're trying to take them out of here. So. Um you can reach me, my numbers, if everybody don't have it, I'm at three one three seven two zero zero one eight six. And we're gonna be trying to get the work to get things, trying to make our community safer. Thank y'all so much for the time. Y'all have a good day.
Alright. Andrew Carter? Mr. Kirk?
Good evening. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year, sir, everyone. Uh I have a question. Who's responsible for the evaluation of the executive director in housing?
The Housing Commission, Inkster Housing Commission.
Okay, uh do you know anything about that evaluation, Mayor?
I've heard. I haven't seen it. I'm looking forward to it.
So how do an, an executive director get a good uh evaluation when everything in housing is failing? I, I don't understand it. So I stepped out of the resident council because there's some.
Speaking to the mic, sir.
I stepped out of the, the president uh of the resident council position uh because there's some things that uh I need to bring uh to the forefront. And I think I don't need to be attached to that. Um that's a lot of things going on in housing. I really would like to sit down with you all to explain it. I have a lot of things here that I'm sure if I show you all, you probably fall out of your seat. So you'll see why this, this gentleman is still in this position and nothing have happened. I have that information.
Do you have copies for all of us?
You can get copies. I'll give you some. Sorry, my printer's not that big.
No, you're fine. If you have one copy, then we can make copies for.
I'll do that.
For all of us. Thank you.
So he can look over it? Give me a call, let me know what's going on if you want to talk further? Okay?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much, sir. We'll be reaching out to you. Jennifer, I do not want to buy your last name. S U R M A? Are you an audience? Serma? Am I saying that correctly? Hi, Jennifer, how are you?
Good, how are you?
I'm good.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Jennifer and my husband Mo is in the corner with my daughter. We are the owners of First Choice Windows located over at two six nine oh five Michigan Avenue. We are a family-owned and operated company that has been in the city of Inkster for twenty-plus years now. We have several employees that are also Inkster residents. The reason we are here today is we have a problem and we need some help. The building next door to us that was formerly Hollywood Pharmacy has been sold to three one five North. We used to use a good chunk of that parking lot for our cars and for unloading material to fabricate the, the windows themselves. Um as soon as they open, we will not have access to any part of the parking lot. That'll leave us with about three parking spaces. I will not be able to get a semi truck in there to unload the material, which means I can't make windows, basically. So upon learning this information, we came to the city and found out that there is um a couple of buildings that are owned by the city that are available. Um two five nine one zero Michigan Avenue is something that would fit our needs. Um we did speak with Caitlin and made an appointment to walk the property. We checked it out. Um it does need a lot of work, but I am confident that we can make it look absolutely beautiful and be a big asset to Michigan Avenue. Uh we submitted, we submitted an informal proposal prior to the Christmas holiday and I followed up with Caitlin today. And she informed us that she had a more solid proposal from another company. Um honestly, I didn't expect to be in this position, um nor have I ever been in this position before, so I didn't know what to submit. So if it's a matter of coming up with a, you know, architect drawing and more information and, you know, submitting a very nice proposal, I can do that as long as I'm given a considerable amount of time to come up with it. You know, at least a couple of weeks so that this other proposal that you have isn't considered automatically and then I'm out of the running. Um because i- in this case, I will have to leave Inkster. I, I cannot operate in the space that I'm in whatsoever. Um we've been rooted in this community for many years. Besides our business, we have purchased and improved over thirty single-family homes. If we move, I have employees that live in Inkster that walk to work and they won't have a way to get to work. So it's gonna impact me and my employees. I've got twenty people that are taking paychecks that are supporting families. So this is a, a real serious problem and I really need, you know, your assistance. Whatever it takes to make this happen, I'm willing to do. Um I just really want to stay in Inkster. I want to stay on Michigan Avenue. I don't really have a lot of other options besides this building. It has. I don't really have a lot of other options besides this building. It has parking on the side and on the side street, a whole nother parking lot where I can put all my material. So, it won't even be visible to the street, which would really be ideal. The front of the building could be, you know, just nicer than mine now. I put a lot of money and effort into the building that we have currently at two six nine oh five. We redid the entire front, and it looks beautiful. But without the opportunity to move forward on this building, we're gonna have to leave it. It's gonna be empty, and I have to start over somewhere else, and that's not what I wanna do after being in Inglewood for over twenty years.
Okay. For the sake of time, first of all, thank you for doing business in our community and, of course, um, just investing in the community. It's very important for us, especially as we move into, um, the next decade. Um, I know that the Planning Director is not here tonight, but, uh, Chairman of the Planning Commission is here, and I just heard one thing as it relates to the parking. Um, did you have a shared parking agreement before with the-
Yes. Yes, we were sharing the parking lot with Hollywood Pharmacy, and now with new ownership, he has no interest in helping me with parking because he's gonna have plenty of his own cars for his employees and customers. So, I mean, I, I don't have a place for my employees' cars, my work trucks.
Understand. Chairman, is, is that, I guess, I mean, I guess it's a new property owner, so they can't do that even though you have a, an agreement for parking for a business, and it's gonna affect the business in such a way it's gonna cost it to close?
What I was gonna do was, uh, just propose that we actually talk with the Planning Department first.
Okay.
Find out all of the ramifications and everything like that, if you will, because you do have to have, uh, uh, an agreement between both parties in order to go forward with shared parking. And then I wanted to talk with them as well about just different options that we could present at that location, and I wanted to also talk to the business owner, just so we can make sure everybody's on the same page and going forward to, so we can assist you and make sure everybody is. So, I, I can't. As far as speaking to shared parking, I know we do offer that option. We offer a waiver and everything for that, but I know, just summing it up, both parties have to be in, in, yes, with it, and I just wanna get that information first.
I get that. I guess that, I, I think I heard her say that she had a shared parking-
With Hollywood.
Hollywood, and then once they sold it, the new owner wasn't, they didn't honor it.
And, and I wanted to ask too, uh, you know, the new owner, I just wanted to inquire, just get some more information on that because of however the means of business is. Sometimes there's different things you can, uh, I guess you could say interject and say, "Well, what's your peak hours?" And this, this, that, and the other. "What time is the truck coming?" Things of that nature. You know, sometimes you could just, uh, uh, plea with business owners and ask them, "Well, can you just help us out with, you know, from a friend of the city?"
Okay.
So, I, I do wanna look into it further before we really can confirm what we could do or if you have to move.
Well, let's do this, Councilman. If you could, maybe tomorrow, you come in and then talk with Planning Department, and then from there, let's reach out to the current owner. I believe it's John Clark. I've seen him here a couple of times throughout, uh, this process. Um, do you know, do we know of a timeline when they're supposed to open?
They're doing some work on the inside, so I would say it's probably gonna be a month or so before he opens for business.
Okay. And the proposed, um, property that, that she's speaking on is at, uh, Michigan Avenue and John Daley, the old, the old three D pawn shop. It's actually owned by the city, and it's, it's Beach, Beach Daley. Thank you. And, um, we've had before, um, unfortunately, actually before, you know, you had this issue, we had another company that actually works within our, um, Neighborhood Stabilization Program that actually wants to do business from out of there as well, and they did present something to Caitlin. Um, but we haven't necessarily presented it to Council or to, to the Planning Commission and actually go to Planning Commission first, and then we'll kinda go through those steps. So, I wouldn't say that it's off the table, but at the same time, we know that you have an immediate issue, and I think that the Councilmen, uh, spoke to the necessary steps. I think they're right away where we can help you. We wanna be good partners across the board, and we want people that's doing business within our community to be good partners as well. So, we'll see what we can do to help you out immediately.
Thank you.
And I am aware of the issue, so definitely working on it.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Okay. Did you guys have any other questions, Councilman?
Last thing, uh, and Caitlin has all of your contact information, right?
She does.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I just wanted to say that, that I'd use your service and create the professionalism, create the windows, hoping that we would be something.
Yeah. See, you're just growing over there. You're just growing like crazy. That's beautiful.
We have exceeded our expectations when we took over that facility, and, I mean, we're really busting at the seams as it is. So, this was a real blow, um, you know, for us. You know, I'm already running out of space and now, now this, you know. So, I, I do wanna stay in Inglewood. I would love to move to that property, um, because it does have more square footers than what I currently have and more parking. So, if I can make that work, then, you know, everybody could be happy.
All right then. Any other questions? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, let's see here. Oh, Octavia Smith? I said the same thing. Had the fancy handrail. Happy New Year.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and residents, and Happy New Year to those who I haven't had a chance to say Happy New Year to. Um, always bring your greetings from Western Wayne Family Health Center, just to share again. You're looking so cute up there, Ms. Felicia.
Thank you.
To let you guys know that we still offer yoga, and I didn't see any of you guys there tonight, um, Zumba and three-mile indoor walks on Wednesdays, and of course, we have everything related to healthcare. So, we do primary care for children all the way up to senior, um, diabetic care, behavioral health services. Um, so, we're there for you, right here in your city. So, if you go into Henry Ford, Beaumont, whatever, you know, just think about checking us out. Um, and we do have a Cookie Matters class that will start tomorrow. It's a six-week class just to assist those folks who are kinda having some issues with their eating habits. I did hear a young lady speaking earlier about diabetes and pre-diabetes, and we wanna smash that if we can. And one way you can do that is getting educated on how to take care of it. So, um, there are some flyers over there on the side for the Cookie Matters class and also for the fitness and yoga. So, I do hope to see you guys sooner or later. All right. Happy decade, everybody.
So, is that just on Wednesdays?
Mondays is yoga. Wednesdays is, um, Zumba, and we alternate that with a three-mile indoor walk.
And this is six o'clock?
Six to seven, both days, yes.
Had that council meeting there one night.
Yeah. It'd be a tight fit if it's gonna be like this, but we'll, we'll do it.
All right, goodness.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Samuel Ward-Bay?
Hi.
Happy New Year.
Hello. Hello, the community. Um, I just wanted to revisit the community benefit agreement. Um, I believe I voted to the last council. A lot of people weren't familiar with it. It was a toss-up. Is it in the community or ain't it in the community? So, um, this is Detroit's.
I can have this copy. I can have this copy.
Um, the community benefit agreement has to do with the development of Inglewood. It states that any developers that's coming into our city, they can get maybe the general contract, but they have to subcontract to people in Inglewood that's licensed or, or the minority company. What it do, it makes other outsiders have to deal with us and do business instead of just them just coming to suck us out of our money, and we're stuck with a nice building, and we still have to pay for it. So, the other part of the, uh, community benefit agreement is when this building or whatever type of infrastructure is made, that when it's time to do business in the business, they have to, um, how can I put it? They have to hire at least a certain amount, maybe forty percent of Inglewood residents, um, and that's like towards new, any new business that's, that's, um, coming like far as under the, uh, new development, um, that we have like far as all the downtown development. Um, those are just numbers, a rough, uh, platform to go by, just trying to put, um, our citizens in a position where we can win and, um, have an even playing field. Peace and love to everybody.
Let me just ask you a question. Um, and this is, I guess, to the, um, Councilman Wapley or Councilman Chisholm. Did you guys, or Councilman Howard, did you guys hear about this and what was the verdict?
Yes, uh, well, uh, Mr. Ward-Bay did bring up the community benefit agreement to us before, and we talked about it. There was nothing really in place where the city decided on doing anything of that nature. However, just to keep in mind, we can't do anything retro for stuff that's already in development and in the pipeline, but as far as developments coming up in the future, everybody, I believe, was kinda in consensus, like, "Yeah, why wouldn't we do that?"
Okay.
You know, it, it would benefit, um, not just us, but it'd benefit the community and those with those skill sets and expertise.
No doubt. You guys, okay. Um, David Jones, did you get a chance to see this document? Okay. So, we'll make sure we get that to you. Sarday, did you get a chance to see that document? For the Community Benefits Agreement from Detroit, yes, ma'am. And that was the same one that you presented last time?
Yes.
Okay. Sarday, you gotta, are you familiar with it, and what do you think? Something that we could possibly do or duplicate?
It's definitely something that could be duplicated, I guess. Um, with, for being such a unique space, um, I think we would have some, definitely some different fine tuning for us in terms of the type of developments that we have here and the type of, I guess, programs that we will want some more support in because we're, you know, much smaller institution. But aside from that, I think CBA agreements are really good for a community, but, um, it just has to have, I guess, a lot of backing or, or teeth in order for it to work.
Um, so, Mr. Wapley, let me ask you this. Is, would it be a difference? Because I don't think they made theirs a part of their city ordinance. What if we made ours a part of our city ordinance? Would that be a different playing field? Was that possible?
Well, let, let me say this. Those are good questions. I believe, again, through, um, Mrs. Fleming, though she has a lot on her desk right now, but in conjunction with the, the attorney, um, what we'll do is we'll reach out to you and we'll actually have a meeting because I believe that the consensus of the council is that this is something that we would like to look at, at least. Is everybody okay with that? At least look at? Okay, and then at least entertain, at least entertain, um, some language and then move forward because I believe that this is a good, a good thing for our community, especially as we move along. So, let's, uh, figure out something with the schedule. I know this week is kinda hectic. Probably next week, and we'll reach out to you and go from there, okay?
Thank you.
All right. Um, Mr. Yarborough? Oh, yeah, she knows she gotta talk. She can't, no choice. She's gonna write her name down.
All right, good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor, City Council, um, I just wanna say Happy New Year first.
Happy New Year.
Congratulations. I just wanna bring some focal points that, uh, I talked, uh, briefly with, um, Councilwoman, uh, woman, Regina Washington, and-
Speaking to the mic a little bit. You a big fella, you know. You got a lot of softs. Wow, you look good. I've been knowing you since you was a young man. Love it, but you like, "Hey, and I..." Put some bass in there. Let me hear you just speak, come up on it. Go ahead.
Uh, I have a few, just a few points, uh, I wanna bring to the attention, and, uh, I think it will be good for the city of Inglewood, uh, a life-making decision course for young men and young women, um, of our, of our city. Um, as you know, I grew up in the same city, and, uh, a lot of things changed in my life growing up as a youth here, uh, from gun violence, from, you know, uh, being academically sound in school and all that type of stuff. And, uh, I think I wanna pitch that to you guys. Hopefully, I can get you guys help and support on it. Uh, and the dynamics of it is just, uh, taking our youth and changing their life around before they get a bad collision so far as, uh, making the wrong decisions and, um, doing the wrong things, and we wanna change, just change the dynamics of their mindset, um, early on. Um, and even the ones that has made a couple of bad decisions, we wanna change it up and, uh, try to put something in front of them that, that they can follow, uh, into adulthood. And, uh, that's pretty much it. Uh, skilled trades too also. Um, that's what the point, well, Councilwoman Regina Washington, we had made skilled trades, and on top of that, uh, probably either combine that with a life-making indecision course.
Is this something, and I'm sorry, um, is this something, Councilwoman, that you're gonna be presenting to us soon with your committee?
It's something that I definitely-
It sounds great. Yeah, it sounds great.
Something for the youth.
Sound exciting.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, I'm really excited about it, and hopefully I can get your support-
Yeah.
-and the council, um, support because I feel like it's, it's, it's a dire need. We have no future without the youth. Uh, we have, we have no council, uh, I mean, we have no, uh, future without, without the youth. Um, I done changed my life around right here in the city of Inglewood, um, and going, hanging out with the wrong crowd and all that type of stuff, you know, and, but now I'm on a better course, you know what I'm saying? I feel like the kids that's under us, you know, the young men, especially the young men, because there's no family without the young man or the man in place, um, and, and protecting our women also, you know what I'm saying? As long as I'm out to piggyback with, man said, "We gotta, we gotta protect our women." So, I feel like that's, that goes into everything that we need. So, I just wanna bring that to attention. Hopefully, I can get you guys help and, uh, on that.
Definitely. Definitely. Thank you so very much.
Okay, no question.
Any questions? I'm sorry, guys. Any questions?
All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Just before you go, is you familiar with the other organizations within the city that are kinda doing the same thing?
Um, not-
And you may appreciate the help, or you could even be a different offshoot of those same, because I believe there's something going on at City Ball right now, Sammy. Aren't you all involved in that?
At the Red Complex. At the Red Complex? At the Complex, at the Red Complex?
Oh, yeah.
You said City Ball?
And also there's seeds to feed. We've been doing things of that nature for years. They, their thing is mentoring young men. That's their motto.
Okay. But we, uh, what, what we, I mean, I get that point, but I was more so also like bringing them to help how to fill out job applications. Uh, that's the, uh, going, fill out certain things. Now, I don't know what, you know, they do like on a day-to-day basis, but-
It's just a suggestion for you to look in so you won't duplicate your efforts.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
That's good. We supporting. Move forward, move on. Rumble, young man, rumble. We want you to continue. Don't worry about that. All right, Mr. Muhammad?
Something like, Mr. Wimber?
Yes, sir.
I would like to bring to the attention-
You can speak into the mic a little bit, Mr. Muhammad?
I would like to bring to the attention, you know, the first law of the universe is motion. The second law is order. And in saying that, everything that's transpiring, the ordinance, the citations, the, the cleanup in the community, there's a dire need for the murder, the lady that spoke on that just occurred, the MIA, missing in action, the sex trafficking that's going on in the community. All this that's transpired in the community, it needs to be addressed, and it got to start with something that's going on or disordinate in the mind. If something's off. So, if we don't get the mind together, then there's something that's gonna be off track always. So, we can clean up a community, but if the ambience don't have nothing to do with what's going on in the mentation. So, in saying that, Savior's Day is coming, and this is where the minister come to town and address issues. So, we dealing with a mindset that need to be addressed to change the condition of the way ones think. That's the only way the community gonna change. It's not gonna start with a youth or in a, it's not gonna, it's, it's gonna start with the youth, but it's gonna start with where the problem exists right now, with our people, the older guys, the middle-aged guys, the ones who's committing all this murder. So, we need to be addressed, and this is why I'm inviting y'all to come out to Savior's Day. We ain't coming to asking for no handout and no help. We have a, we have an area where we teach self-improvement, the basic for community development, and that's what's needed, something to improve self so the community can be better. And this man will speak about that when it's, it's time, and we invite you out.
What's today? You, you say it for the public. It's the, what is it? The twenty-third? And the, say the, the day?
February twenty-third.
Location?
I have, um, TCF where the old Cobalt used to be. Um, we gonna sit the flyers right here before we leave. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir, and Happy New Year to you. All right. We'll start with you first. We'll start with you first, Councilwoman Washington? No, 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 shit. Ooh, I'm done, only got one. Oh, I skipped y'all? Oh, I skipped y'all? Y'all got something to say? No, I'm just messing with you, I'm sorry. City Clerk?
Um, I just wanna wish everyone a Happy New Year. Thank you, Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry, City Clerk, I apologize. City Treasurer?
Uh, the same, uh, definitely wanna wish everyone a Happy New Year and a safe and prosperous, uh, twenty-twenty.
Perfect. All right, Councilwoman Washington, I'll just jump in ahead there, all right.
I hope everyone enjoyed their holiday. I just wanted to say Happy New Years to everyone. I mean, let's keep in prayer all family and soldier and troops that are being deployed at this present moment. There's so much going on in the world, so let's just keep each other in prayer at this present moment. Thank you.
Happy New Year, and I concur with Councilwoman Washington. She took the words out of my mouth and now.
Council, Councilwoman Watley?
Well, you know, I'm always different.
Oh, it's all right.
First of all, I would like to, um, apprise everyone here that this is Law Enforcement Appreciation Week. Um, and I wanted, I wanted Chief Riley here so I could tell him how much I appreciated all the help he's given me over the past years, but just all of our officers who lay their lives on the line every day or, uh, just do things they really don't have to do. Because I've run into police in other jurisdictions that aren't quite as nice as ours are. And I've had my issues with our police department, but all I've ever done is go and talk to them. And they do whatever is necessary to make that situation better. So I wanna say, um, good job, guys. We do appreciate you, okay? The second thing I wanna talk about is by, um, by charter, every councilperson is required to have four advisory council meetings a year for their district. Now, most of us invite anyone from the other districts to come to our meetings. What I've done this year, since the participation has been less than stellar, uh, I have, uh, made a list of all the meetings that I'm going to have for the entire year. This information will go on the website. They'll be on Tuesdays at six o'clock at Western Wayne Family Health Center in the community room. So for the, and most of them are towards the end of the month, so you'll have time. But these, uh, dates, which is January twenty-eighth, March thirty-first, June twentieth, September twenty-ninth, and December fifteenth, will all be on the website, they'll be on TV, they'll be all the places that we use to disseminate information to the public. So you are welcome to come to these meetings anytime. Uh, my colleagues are welcome to attend these meetings with me and let your people know that you'll be at these meetings during those times. Because the one thing we have a problem with here in Inglester is information dissemination. A lot of us say, I didn't know that. And true enough, they didn't because somebody told somebody who didn't tell the other person. So I want all of these meetings to be available to you all year long so you can plan to attend them. We wanna invite other groups to come out during these time periods if you wanna talk to these people. Curtis Dean, you're welcome to come out and talk to the, talk to the census, yes, yes. And, uh, that's it. Like I said, it'll be posted, website, we'll try and get it on the TV and, uh, we'll put it on the ICAN page, any place we can put it, so you'll know these meetings are occurring and you'll know far enough in advance so you can make arrangements to attend this. Oh, look, he's gonna make me a flyer. But this also, these are public meetings, so they'll be posted on the door. Ms. Felicia is real, I'm sorry, Madam Clerk is really good at that, and that's it.
Awesome. Mayor Proton? You speak on that. I'm, I'm okay with silence.
I'm not sure who passed this out to us.
Um, maybe Ms. Bailey gave it to you.
So maybe some of these, some of this is on the, on the desk over there, but this is what I was speaking on a couple of council meeting ago about our driver's license. Um, you have to have star, it's like a real ID, uh, complete driver's license. By October, I think it was, you will not be able to fly. You will not be able to do a whole lot of stuff, so I'm hoping this information is out there. But if not, you can always contact the Secretary of State, make an appointment. That's what I do. If you make, people make an appointment and go in there like five or ten minutes before your appointment time, just sit down, they'll call you. So there's no reason why we should have a whole lot of lines out there because you can do that. Go on the internet and make an appointment, but it's imperative that most people get this driver's license. I'm not sure what else is gonna happen after this. And also too, speaking of William Miller, when he was, um, talking about everything that's going on, uh, women are being ta, snatched all the time, I'm not su, well, I'm gonna talk to the mayor to see if we can make a pledge that our men in our city.
No, no doubt.
Our men in our city, we all gonna take a pledge and we gonna protect one another.
That's right.
So we gonna let these people know, you can't just come in here and do what you wanna do without women. Women should be allowed to walk the streets without having harassed and also training. Because apparently there's no training. Don't know what's going on. We need to do something and protect our city. And me, and the guys, because boys are being snatched as well. So maybe one day, uh, once we have time to sit down and we can bring it back to you. That's what I would like to do.
Awesome, yeah, for sure. I can't wait on that. Let's make that happen next Monday.
Okay, next Monday, yeah, okay. Okay.
Okay, all right. I got some guys that's ready.
I'm serious, I mean, cause, I mean, you know, it's scary out there, right, right?
Yeah.
Okay, that's all I have to say. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
I just.
See you, sir.
Wish everybody a Happy New Year, um, and also, Mr. Mayor, I wanted to bring this to your attention and.
Can't hear you.
Well, we gonna get a chance to, uh, schedule an appointment to be with you. But I do want the administration to look at the eastern outfall. We had a budget of a million dollars in our water and sewage and also two million dollars in our local street fund over four fiscal years. So that started in twenty-twelve, twenty-thirteen. So I want the administration to definitely look at that because that's two million dollars that we had budgeted for over those four fiscal years. So, uh, are we gonna schedule a meeting? Very imperative for us to look at this because possible two million dollar savings right now. So let's, you know, let's schedule something for Monday. Wanted to give you a heads up on what we can discuss.
Okay.
That's all I have, Mr. Wimber.
Okay, um, let's just say this, so, um, next Monday, is that what we're looking at? You wanna do, next Monday, let's do three o'clock. Is that okay with you? Good, and then, uh, Darian, of course, Jerome, you'll be in that meeting. We'll move forward. Anybody else you see that you need at meeting? Okay, and anybody else who wanna. All right, did you have anything else, sir?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Councilman.
One, I'm, I'm sick and tired.
Speaking to the mic, please, sir. Thank you, sir.
Can you hear me now?
We can.
One, one, I'm, 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 I'm just tired and sick and tired. People making a drag strip out of Callah. I'm requesting Mr. Mayor to try to just put up the signs that's supposed to be there. Everyone knows they're going down Callah, the speed limit. Some of them come seventy, eighty, eighty miles an hour shooting down the street, some of them run the stop sign, run from Middle Belt all the way to Harrison. So I, I would like to, uh, request, Mr. Mayor, that we do get some four, five mile per hour signs and put up down, going down Callah. Matter of fact, uh, once, once, deep with the people in my district, I think we gonna be trying to really push back up many of the signs that need to be in our community. Come down our street, our community, uh, speed limit is only twenty-five miles an hour, okay? People on Irene have, in the bridge port area over in there, have made initiative by their own signs. Down through there, you, twenty-five miles an hour. But we're trying to take control of our area and we just want, if in fact that, I think it's already, I, I don't know, I'll check with, maybe he can explain it. I think we already at twenty-five miles an hour at Callah, Callah. It's not a drag strip, I think we need to put more signs up there and that people know and enforce it, need to be enforced. Other complaint is, uh, this, I would like the job descriptions of our building department and the job description of our code enforcement. Clear job descrip. I have a serious problem and I talked with the mayor about it and, but if I could hit it right, he'd break it back forward again, okay? Think, well, I won't go no further than that. I'm just asking for both job descrip. Pardon me, clear. Okay, uh, I am, I am sick and tired, being sick and tired. If I have to, Mr. Mayor, brought to your attention about Inglester housing. I'm not taking it anymore, no more. Hope you're with me?
Oh, one hundred percent.
Uh, the simple fact is, you know, and then sit up and I see a person, first of all, I was a commissioner, okay? Which had all the right in the world to put in for the evaluation of the, the director. Somehow they kicked my, uh, evaluation out, but, but I'll get the answers to that. However, is this, let me just tell you people in this community something, okay? April the first, around April the first, okay? We're gonna be counting, okay? This director got over a hundred and something units empty, okay? Empty. And then you gonna give him a, 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 a excellent performance review, and I, I think we need to hear from the commissioner and find out why. How? Okay, people are sleeping in, I, I mean, I, you know, I'm just sick of it. Okay, you hear people coming to this mic here, go to, go to the commissioner's meeting and, and they complain about every single thing that's going on. They complain, okay, but nothing's being done. You know, we gotta do something. That's my district. The majority of Inglester houses in my district, okay? That's why I got to raise it. I don't need no empty units. I have talked to people in my whole area right now about they, they, they abandoned homes and fixing them up, and people are doing that in my district. Only big problem I got is housing. I just wanna, and then, and then I wanna, you know, I don't, I don't mean to raise my voice today, but, you know, it just some things that's got to be taken care of. Yeah, we can sit there all day long, be on front street, talk front, but we gotta do something. That alone me with the mayor, I said, Mr. Mayor, something got to be done. And he agreed. We can't continue to sit up here. That young lady on the end over there, she's been here constantly. It's been over six months she's been complaining about getting a decent house, a house to live in. And they, they, they bounce around like she was a pawn. And make no mistake about it, if we don't do anything and get them, them houses unboarded and put people in them, that's, that's our loss. That's our loss. Why don't you go check it? I mean, just go check it, you know?
So let's, 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 let's do this so we're not talking to one another.
Right. Well, if you want to ask, I tell you to just check it.
That, that's fine. We just wanna make sure that we're still decent and in order. But let me say this, uh, Councilman, I agree one thousand percent with you. Um, I believe that the next step is for this body to request a meeting with the commissioners and have them come, um, here with us. And let's have a joint meeting and, uh, hear from the director, um, be able to ask those questions of the commissioners that we appointed to that body. And then from there, um, look at what the action plan is because my, me too, uh, over the holiday, I had a chance to go into multiple units in, uh, Inglester housing in Lamone and Denby, and I am. Let's just say that I'm, I'm, um, yeah. We, we definitely need to, uh, have some accountability there all the way around. So I know that, um, we've been dealing with this issue, um, in the public for at least a couple of years now. And, uh, we need to figure out what's the next steps into, to moving, uh, the quality of life in that area forward. So I'm looking forward to, um, what, how do we do that? How do we call a meeting of the commission with this body?
Um, I was, I was.
I'm sorry, be, be, be orderly?
Um, I can schedule the meet, what days? I know that Mondays are basically good for most council people. And so I will coordinate with, um, Mr. Bollinger in regards to setting up the joint meeting day.
Do we have a president for the coun, for the commission yet? I know the president just, the, the, oh, so is it the vice chair that actually takes care of that? Let's reach out to the vice chair as well of the commission and see when we can coordinate a meeting. If that satisfies this body, understand that I do have a meeting, uh, with Mr. Bollinger and the, um, person from HUD , um, coming up, I believe, next week is on my calendar, correct, City Clerk? Um, so what I would like to do is, of course, have this body along with, um, the commission, along with, um, the director. Of course, it's a public meeting, so we'll make sure that everyone knows about the meeting and then we'll be able to tie everything in together and move forward together, whatever the decision may be. But know this, that everyone in Inglester matters, everyone in Inglester counts, and everyone in Inglester deserves quality of life. So I will definitely be doing everything within my power to make sure that we move that forward. So, Councilman, I didn't mean to steal your time, but is that okay?
All right.
All right, you got anything else?
No. Wish everybody a Happy New Year.
That was good.
I'm, and you. Need to come together, love and unity. Without, without coming together, it don't matter what you think about me, it ain't matter what nobody think about nobody. We have to come together and think about the issues that we have at hand. Uh, I, I seen something on Facebook, fifteenth, having a citywide meeting. I'm, I'm planning on being there.
Speaking to the, the mic, you planning on being where?
A meeting on the fifteenth?
Yeah.
Person in a, in the community called a meeting.
Yes.
Us planning, uh, meeting to talk about some of the issues and what we concerned that we have, the ideas of the people of the community.
Yeah, that's actually, um, Dennis Black, um, the executive assistant out of my office. Um, we're coordinating, and they had it at the Inglester Recreation Complex on January the fifteenth from six to eight PM. Um, and, um, that's, that's what you're talking about. So what we're trying to do is, I think, even, uh, what Councilwoman Watley was alluding to earlier is bring everyone together that's doing all types of work within the community so we can actually start tacking it together versus in small pockets. So, um, that'll be the first of many meetings, so I appreciate you plugging that. So you'll be there with me. All right, perfect. Okay, let's say this, our distinguished and honorable State Representative Jewel Jones have come in, uh, come in the house. Young man, you wanna come forth and holler at us? See that plug? Y'all like that? Looking good, man, I like that.
I like that, Mr. Mayor, I like it.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, good evening, Mayor, Council Administration, citizens, a Happy New Year, Happy New Calendar to everyone. Uh, we have been on the research since, uh, early December, so we're actually getting back to business on Wednesday. Um, not a whole lot, um, that has been going on this last month. Um, next time I'm at the council meeting or, um, through our, our Councilman, um, Chisholm, I will share, it's, it's, it's probably if you've been paying attention to News Eleven, uh, some of the, the news media outlets have compiled a list of, um, the eleven top legislative updates from last year. Um, pre, basically highlighting things like car insurance, sports betting, uh, raise the A's legislation, some of just the major, um, things we worked on. So definitely we getting a packet to you all, just so you can see some of the stuff that'll be coming down the, uh, pipeline this year. Um, but besides that, um, I was here, I was available in case y'all have any questions. Um, State of State be coming up later this month, um, so our governor be sh, um, sharing with us what's been going on, uh, lately, uh, for everyone in the state. Uh, so that might be a good opportunity, um, for us just to see what's going on, uh, elsewhere, but I'm not sure if y'all have any questions?
Anyone have any questions for the rep? Anyone in the audience have a question for the rep? Okay, here and now I have one. Oh, I have one, sir. Um, do we have a legislative agenda for the city of Inglester?
Uh, I would, I would say in general, yes, we have a, in, in terms of like from my office specifically, yes. I have a legislative agenda for the city. I'm not sure if you mean just something.
That in concert with the, uh, Senator, Congresswoman as well? That in concert with the, uh, Senator, Congresswoman as well?
So, uh, with, it's, in terms of, uh, Senator Betty Jean Alexander, we haven't, uh, working alongside them, um, as, as much as we can, I think.
Oh, yeah, I see them, I see them both down there.
Yeah, yeah, we got some, got the dynamic duo over here.
Representing, yeah.
But as well with, uh, Congresswoman Rashida's office, uh, basically for this, when she's initially been in office, um, they're really still doing a lot of infrastructural things, uh, that's been going on. But we've been informally working with them, but I think, uh, it does make sense. Probably sometime we all get together, all of us can sit down, I mean, with the commissioners and anyone else and figure out, uh, a real solid plan, um, in terms of moving forward, especially tapping in with the housing and everything, if it's anything we can do to support. I definitely would, would love that, cause I'm, I know we've been hearing about a lot of issues as well.
Okay, that sound good, so then, um, what I'll do, if I can, I'll reach out to you and put everybody on the email. And then we'll move forward from there. Sound good?
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Really appreciate your service, thank you very much. All right, we won't belabor the time, but, uh, no, 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 no? Okay, go ahead, quickly.
I apologize.
Please.
I mean, I'd like to invite everybody to put out also at, uh, Christ Temple. City Refuge, um, on January eighteenth, and we'll be having a gospel tour to the Lady Dr. King.
That's right.
At a day.
Is that your program, is that your program? Is that your program?
Yeah.
How you gonna forget your... Okay, so we're gonna make sure we get that on the website as well. Because that's very important, Dr. Key. Okay, I got you, you already know what it is. Um, let me have, uh, let me say this, um, just real quickly. You guys will be receiving a mayor's report next council meeting. I apologize for not having it all the way together, but I want to make sure it's complete with all the departments. Also too, hearing, uh, questions that you propose, proposed tonight, I want to make sure that we answer those questions and have that in that report as well. So you will be receiving it every first council meeting along with the financial report we'll be bringing, uh, to you every first meeting. Um, also too, we know what we had planned but ran out before our last, uh, council meeting before we went out, um, for the holiday. They'll be coming back to us, uh, look like it's gonna be the first, um, meeting in February, unfortunately, just because, uh, we didn't get everything that we needed to get to them until like December the twenty-seventh. So the audit is being done currently, we're fine, we'll be okay. Um, so we don't have any penalties that's gonna incur. What we will do is we'll make sure that we bring a full report to the body along with the community and then we'll be going into our budget process. Cause there's some amendments that we'll be bringing before this body and then, uh, of course, moving, um, closer to the end of the fiscal year, some things that we need to do. Um, also, as it relates to, I just wanted to make sure that everyone, uh, receive the, uh, email about confidentiality, how we'll be, uh, sharing information amongst the council, um, that you will be receiving any reports, anything that's of, uh, newsworthy, uh, standard from, um, the, uh, department heads and the, uh, police and fire and through the mayor's office. And if you guys see that we need to do that another way, please let me know. Question?
Yes. Um, what happened to the, uh, real-time text we used to get?
We can definitely do that if you like, I have no problem with that. That, that makes sense for you?
Mm-hmm.
All right, perfect, so we'll make sure that that happens.
The only reason I'm suggesting that is because a lot of times the people in our districts begin to call you and ask you about that.
Correct.
And we were getting real time from the police department, so we were able not to disclose any pertinent information, just to say, "This, this is happening and the police were on the scene and handling it."
Yes, ma'am, that'll be done, consider that done, okay? Yep. Yeah, we did, but we just want to make sure, and, and that's why we're talking as a body, so we all clear on what's gonna happen. All right, then, and lastly, but not least, come on, Curtis Dean. Census, we've been talking about it, and you notice the last voice that we'll hear?
Yes.
As it relates to the census, so speak, please.
Thank everybody that keep talking about it.
Go ahead.
Uh, many of us worked through the holidays because that was the best time to reach some of the stakeholders and some of the young people were home for school and, uh, people were off work. So, um, we did develop at the hands of Rebecca Daniels, uh, Facebook, uh, Census twenty twenty for the city of Inglewood. And we, when I left home, we had over a hundred and sixty likes already. There are numbers there and more, there's obviously gotta be a lot more information added, but it's, it, it speaks to the census employment and our desire to have our people work in our community. We know what's happening here. And we need to, everybody, please impress upon the people that you meet in your walks that these jobs can be applied for at twenty, twentytwentycensus.gov/jobs. And they range from, they're temporary jobs that will run between eight and ten weeks. But there will be sixty thousand people hired in Wayne County and we really need to get our share of people to work in our city. And that's basically it. Many of us have worked attempting to put, not attempting, but putting together people and on the issues that they are best at to take the message forward. We've, uh, given information and actually I'm going to, I will have a much better report for you on the next meeting because we're having a meeting tomorrow here at City Hall and I've invited about thirty people, hoping that we can, uh, we can populate our, I believe there's twelve different, twelve, twelve different chairs that are going to be, uh, on the Census Executive Board. And hopefully we'll, not hopefully, we will have people who are interested in working with each of those committees.
Good.
Okay? So you will get a good report based on the fact that we do have upcoming events. And after this meeting and when we find out where everybody is willing to work and how much time they're willing to commit, we will hit the ground running. It's not an, well, I guess it is an open meeting. If you'd like to be there, it's at eleven o'clock Tuesday here at City Hall. So Tuesday, meaning Tuesday, tomorrow, January seventh. We, uh, we sent out, uh, down through the holidays, we sent out messages and I, um, did not ask mayor and council to attend, I know many people were. I thought it best that we meet and bring the information from the meeting back to you. And, um, that being said, if you have any questions, I might have an answer.
Speak up.
Well, I got a response back, I sent a message to the mayor and I got a response back that the meeting would be held on January seventh, which is tomorrow, and it didn't say...
So excited, I probably just said, "Yes, have the meeting." So...
Yes.
We, yeah, we definitely, what we'll do from now on is just make sure we go through the clerk's office because the clerk handles all of the rooms. But we'll be in council chambers tomorrow.
You will be or we will be?
We'll be, right in here.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, we'll be right in here, we won't be up here.
Okay.
Is that okay with everybody? Uh, you guys are all gonna be here too? I just said, "Well, I was gonna be here." Okay, and you got anything else?
Hmm, yes, and it's Curtis Dean, citizen, it has absolutely nothing to do with the census.
Do I need to put you on three minutes?
Uh, give me three minutes.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, back in the dinosaur day when I first roamed the earth, there was an or, there was an ordinance...
Never heard that one.
That was six oh three. That ordinance was, um, local female minority business enterprise. And it ran until the governor or the state of Michigan struck down affirmative action. At that time, the then attorney, Mills Bukosny, had called me and, and called me in hallways and so on to see if I could get that committee back together. We worked on that committee fifteen or twenty years. And we were able to, uh, reduce it, re, reduce the amount of money. It originally stated that any contract over twenty-five thousand would have to go before the committee, would have to have a form. So if you can either look in the old and find the six oh three B or there's Carmen Mitchell, myself, Ruth Williams, there's many of us who are aware and may even still have a copy of the ordinance. Cause I, I'm, I'm not sure that, you know, the pattern from the city of Detroit will work, but just for our reference here in our city, possibly between reviewing what they have and what we have, we can come together with something for our city. That's it, no questions, right?
Perfect. Again, happy new year, everyone, uh, moving towards twenty twenty. Your vision, focus, what we're doing, so sounds like that each of the council members are ready to rock and roll, so we're, we're hoping that you can continue to be energized, motivated, stay involved, stay informed. At the, every meeting, host, we need you here. Oh, we want you to be a part of it, we want to hear your voice. Um, it's important for us to be talking in one voice together. So I believe that, uh, the city of Inglewood is one of the greatest places on earth and that it is the city of excellence. Cause we truly move together, we just need to move together, help one another. And I believe that everything that we do, as long as we do it in love and respect, we can move forward. So, action for German? Y'all don't wanna go home? The mood is supported, all in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
All right, let's go home.